Is it raining out or something? Usually we've got a pretty ruckus crowd before I have to settle you down.
I think we have a karaoke machine in the back. Can you go get that?
Go Kraken. Yeah. I now call the Des Moines City Council meeting for Thursday, May 4th, the order, and I will have Councilmember Harris lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
...of the United States, America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Let the record reflect that all seven members of council are present. Before we begin with the public comment, I promise that we had just, thank you, we had Deputy Mayor Buxton and I, and along with our lobbyist Anthony Hempstead, went to Washington, D.C., to represent our city on airport concerns. So I promised a quick report on that, along with some interjection by Deputy Mayor Buxton. But I just wanted you guys to know that Burien, SeaTac, Norney Park, Port of Seattle Commissioner Hamdi Mohammed, state reps Orwell and Hackney from the 11th District. We even, on the plane there, we even met up with most of the King County Council, who we didn't expect to see, and we rode with five different congressmen. We met with Senators Cantwell, Senator Murray's office, particularly her individuals that were writing the legislation that she's championing. We met with Congressman Rick Larson, Adam Smith, Congressman Jayapal, Del Bene, Kilmer, Schreier. We even met with the FAA and other congressional representatives concerning transportation. Particularly, we met a gentleman who's writing legislation for the transportation that's from New York City and shares some of the same burdens our community does, too. It happened to be a timely time to go because our federal legislators are in the process of finalizing verbiage and direction for the 2023 Reauthorization Act for the FAA. That occurs every five years. The meeting was designed to share concerns and views and needs in this act in support of our residents. Our legislators at the federal level were appreciative and supportive of our efforts and impressed by the unity of what we came to do in concerning matters. And here's some of the things that we talked about. We talked about a couple, a House bill, a House bill and a Senate bill. It was the Sound Insulation Treatment and Replacement Program Act. We were supporting, we came in supportive of Senator Murray and Representative Smith's legislation that would allow for federal funding to replace failed noise insulation packages, essentially securing federal monies for the program. We also supported Congressman Smith's legislation on the aviation noise and emission mitigation. This will empower the EPA to play a productive role in addressing community concerns about aircraft noise and emissions. One of the things is FAA has been involved, but somebody who's professional, particularly about particulate and so forth, getting the EPA involved was something we were championing as well. We talked about imposing a deadline for action on FAA Neighborhood Environmental Survey. We proposed two policies for inclusion in the 2023 FAA reauthorization. Create an Aircraft Noise Advisory Committee, consisting of representatives from key federal agencies, airports, airlines, aerospace manufacturers, and community groups from airport cities to recommend whether and how current federal aircraft noise policy should change, and create a statutory deadline six months after the submission of this recommendation to the FAA to make final determinations of next steps. So part of that, just to explain it in layman's terms, is look at the noise contours that are today and evaluate those and adjust and change accordingly per the data. Expand sustainable aviation fuels in its citizen investments. Part of the thing that everybody sees, and we were talking to Maria, Senator Cantwell, she had just visited GE that was working on a electric airplane. She thought it could be an answer to a lot of short destinations, like flying from Seattle to Portland, Spokane, and so forth. But they also talked about sustainable airport fuels as well. And the great thing about these is the emissions and the, let's say, the bad things, the hazmat materials that fall on our town would at least decrease. But one of the things we really tried to pursue is funding these types of technologies for emissions reduction and technology that eliminates noise, as well as, well, it eliminates particulate. The other one we did, passing, we were asked for another one of Adam Smith's bills, was Protecting Airport Communities from Particulate Emissions Act. This would bring more federal attention and engagement to ultrifying particulate, in particular, which is the one that gets ignored the most. We also talked to the FAA and our legislators, because the truth is, we know we need a second airport, because we can't have the burden. And Payne Field, even if it's a stopgap, is not enough. And honestly, we're looking at 20 to 25 years, based on the infrastructure and other things. So recently, when the state's committee for citing a second airport essentially failed, that put us back another five years on a 20 to 25-year process. And in the meantime, what we're trying to do is limit the burden that our community has to take. But we asked them for policies to clarify the processes that they can make this process of citing a second airport easier and simpler. So maybe we can cut a couple corners and save some time in the regulation there. The other thing we did is we put the FAA in particular and some of the congressmen to task on eliminating the scheduled noise night flights, particularly some of the cargo that comes in at 3:30 and stuff that we all get to enjoy. I'll say a few more comments, but I want to give a chance for Deputy Mayor Buxton to interject, too, here at this point. But I will tell you, we went there for 72 hours, probably slept six to eight of them, and were walking around, and it was timely spent to really try to talk to some of the people that can really make change in this particular venue and in concern for our community. So with that, I turn it over to Deputy Mayor Buxton for a few minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I have always said, since even before, you know, when I was campaigning the first time, that I really believe that our city and airport cities across country, we are part of a COGS and a global machine. If you look at a map of flights all over the world, it's like, can one community stop that? No. It's sustainable aviation infrastructure across the country. It's essential for keeping our place in the global economy. So, but what we do need to do is see what we can do to relieve our airport communities all across the country. Our visit there, I do want to make a couple comments. It was a highly unusual collaboration in a powerful voice. The fact that a port was visiting to advocate, along with the surrounding communities, in agreement on this set of items. It was highly unusual, and the legislators took note. Follow-up conversations are even being planned. I mean, the conversation is not over. Back to what can we do? Washington is key in the Pacific Rim, and we do need another commercial airport. And I think that that was an important point. We were not advocating for just more capacity. We need more capacity for our economy in the United States and in the state of Washington. We were insistent that that included a second airport. We were not going to ask for capacity without making it very clear that that meant another airport. But how do, the things that Matt talked about, though, how do we overcome? The barrier for keeping a strong aviation economy is the impact on residents all over the country and here in our own community. How are we going to overcome that? Through these mitigation strategies and these that we advocated for. Those are all viable, and we came to the table with a strong voice. I think one of the challenges we face is when we come, when the airports are coming to their communities, the strength of the aviation community needs to come and say, this is a gift to our country and to our cities. How do we make it be a gift? We do it by overcoming some of these health impacts and noise and emissions impacts. And there is resistance in Congress to this expense, and it's because they're calling in an expense. And I felt like there needs to be some messaging that says, this is not an expense, it's an investment in the people of this country. We need to turn around our mindset about what we're doing. It's a, we need to create gifts, we need to invest. It's an investment in the strength of our economy to invest in these mitigations. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, a couple of the other benefits were that our relationships with some of the members of particularly port commissioners and some of the port, the rest of the cities, our state legislators, even our federal legislators, was strengthened. And it was really impressive. In fact, Maria Cantwell's one of the people that's authorized, or one of the authors of the FAA Reauthorization Act, and she talked about Senator Cruz being kind of a difficult part of it. I even told her I'd go beat him up if she wanted me to, right? Because what we're doing is we told her this is serious. And she also was one when, like I said, when I told her 20 to 25 years, she was almost aghast. She had not realized that it would take that kind of effort and timeframe. But it was very productive, and we talked about so many things. If you would have been on our flight, we were talking about the Blake decision, which obviously we're going to be talking about in the future here. But there were so many good things that came out of it, including reestablishing contact with the FAA here. We're actually, we happened to meet with the gentleman that runs the FAA in our Des Moines office, and we're going to be, we're going to be meeting with him and reestablishing that relationship as, too. So there's some great benefit there. But I assure you, we beat the pavement in the city's best interest. So that's what we wanted to share with that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to you. Are there any correspondence?
There are no other correspondence.
Okay.
Emails you've received.
All right. It'll be time for public comment. I would just like to remind those participants that any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks, or who become boisterous threatening or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting, and you will have three minutes to speak. And to start with that, we'll start with Ms. Martha Hamilton. You have excellent handwriting, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm a new resident in Des Moines. I bought my home last June. Loving it here. I'm in the Zenith neighborhood, and I want to talk about housing. I want to be part of the solution for affordable housing. I want to be able to use my land around my home to create cottages to help people have places to live. I have many friends that are former teachers, former social workers, former people doing other things that don't have the means to pay the rents of this area. And what I want to do is create housing so that people actually can have a place where they can age in place. There are lots of cottage housing out there that run close to half a million dollars. But what I'm looking at is, how can we help remove the barriers to support people like me who want to be part of the solution? To create housing that's affordable for people that have worked hard, people that have really given a lot in their lives, and who don't have the means to continue paying increasing rents in this area? So just as you all are working with DC for the airport and for trying to solve things there, I really implore the council to try to remove some of these zoning barriers. And this recent Housing Needs Assessment is a great report. Kudos to those who did it. What a great report, what great information. But what I found in looking even at backyard cottage for my home is we're looking at $500 to $550 per square foot. So for a 600-square-foot backyard cottage, I'm looking at $300,000. That's not sustainable, and that's not affordable. So again, I would implore you, take a look. See, can we find zoning that includes maybe pocket neighborhoods? Maybe allow housing that has wheels? You can buy a beautiful 400-square-foot backyard cottage on wheels, if it's allowed with the zoning, for about $150,000 installed. That's affordable housing. So thank you so much. I look forward to talking with you all more. And really, please, let's do something about affordable housing.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Moving on to Ms. Christine Tolleson.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members and those joining tonight. I've been before the council over the past several months, advocating for preservation of the public open space in the Marina's North parking lot. During this time, the city completed its repair and renovation, and it looks beautiful. Thank you. Tonight, we're continuing our advocacy to set aside this area as a public open space for the benefit of our residents and others who come to visit our city by formally making it a park. The petitions that we're presenting to you tonight have been signed by individuals from across Des Moines' neighborhoods and neighboring cities. In total, there are over 1,100 signatures, made up of over 800 residents and approximately 280 non-residents. Of the resident signatures, all of our neighborhoods are represented, with the majority from the Central, North Hill, Zenith, and Marina districts, or neighborhoods. The non-resident signatures are mainly concentrated in the surrounding cities, including Normandy Park, Burien, SeaTac, Kent, Fedaway, and Auburn. They express the desire to designate the North Marina Parking Area and Boardwalk as a city park, which is a purpose that it has served for years. It has been identified as a public benefit area by the city. It is in the middle of the parks, Beach Park, Fishing Pier Park, Outlook Parks, and the new Soundview Park. It also serves as a community gathering spot for functions and activities throughout the year. There are some things to understand about these petitions. They were assembled and collected by a community of amateurs, and therefore, they lack any real legal status. Property descriptions are generally expressed in layman's terms. They have signatures with their neighborhoods identified, surrounding cities, and surrounding cities, but certainly lack details needed in a formal petition. So what useful purpose does it serve? Well, in the absence of the ability to provide public comments and have open discussions elsewhere, such as town hall meetings or other gatherings to discuss open spaces, they express the community's desire for the future use of the North Marina Parking Area. They also provide input to the city's economic development and municipal committees, as well as the Parks, Recreation, and Senior Services Department for planning. They likewise provide initial public comment for consideration in updating the city's comprehensive master plan in the works this year. We ask that you seriously take these petitions seriously and take them under advisement and act on them. We also request that you comment on them, either at a council meeting or via the Des Moines City Current. With that preamble, I'm pleased to present this community request for myself and over 1,000 other individuals who are asking that the North Marina Parking Area be designated as a city park to remain in perpetuity for our public benefit. Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight, and we look forward to your response. And I'll give you the petitions.
Thank you. If you'll hand them to the city clerk, that'd be great. Thank you, Ms. Tolleson. Very well spoken. Next is Mr. Bill Linscott.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, City Manager, everybody else who's joined tonight. I wanted to talk about community engagement on kind of three items. And the first is our comprehensive plan for the city. You know, we got a grant for that. I think we accepted it in December. And with that, it came a plan, and in there, it calls for community engagement, which is very important for that plan. But it had a schedule that said they should have the participation plan done by the end of February. And I haven't seen a briefing on it. I haven't really heard anybody talking about when's this going to happen. So that's followed by the 223rd Street project. And in that, too, are requirements for stakeholder involvement, both residents and business. And I'm not sure if that's required to be completed this year. The first one is. But I see a lot of this kind of hanging out there, and the years going by. And then the last one, which is really probably the first one, is our Marina steps. And I know Marina steps have been here for a long time. There's been a couple versions of renderings out there on them. But the background has shifted on that. And we're to the point where we're going to have some detail there, and we ought to have some engagement with the community on that as well. So what I was going to suggest, back when we were working with paid parking, and that was an exciting topic, Joe Duesenberry had these once-a-month open sessions where you could come in and he'd answer questions. He would update you on information. And I think there's an opportunity here to create something like that, where you have one time a month where you've got these topics open and available for community engagement, where you can really have a discussion. And so I'd like you to give that some consideration. And if you've got some information on these plans, maybe get that out. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Linscott. Moving on to Ms. Kay Van.
Good evening to everyone. I just would like to bring up the issues of the street where 280th and 281st is. I know that the city is working on, or working with the fire chief on making that a fire lane, where they're going to increase the fine from $50 to $200. And I just don't feel that that's not going to do anything, because they park there regardless. They see, they gather there, they see the police car comes, they scattered. These are the same people that comes down there quickly, daily, that's doing this. Also, it was mentioned to me that a few times, that, you know, doing the, that we're spending money to do the constructions on the pier, on the parking, that's not going to eliminate people parking over here, on this side, on the north side, the nook of the north side of the street. With the, if all stars align, and the construction starts on the pier, on the, at the, what is it, the fourth quarter of the year, people will not have any parking, nowhere to park. And that's going to get worse down on that end. And there's times that they park on the sidewalk on 281st. And people that walks down, up and down, they have to walk on the side street. And we can't, we can't ask them to move. Who knows what they have in their cars? And that could start a confrontational, and we don't want to do that. So we need help from the city. We need something other than putting a fire lane there. Something that's going to say, you can't park here. Something that don't give, doesn't give them a chance to park there. The fire lane, I'm just saying, the fire lane is not going to do it. I do want to thank the chief and his team. He's not here. His team does come down there every so often. And, but I do want to say, if they, when they do come there, be more aware, because when I see them come down there, it's good present, but they drive by and not doing anything with those people that parks, that park in the place, there's no parking, or in the, on the boat launch. So that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van. Moving on to Commodore Ivana Halverson. And because you're coming from an organization, you get up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council, for having me back again. I'm delighted to be here to accept the proclamation that will be later in the evening and also reiterate our excitement for the upcoming South Sound Opening for Boating event that is to happen next Saturday. We look forward to a great weekend. We're hoping for good weather. We have lots of activities planned for our visiting yacht clubs that are coming into town. We are hosting 10 boats in the Marina, which is the maximum we were allowed to reserve. Those are clubs from Viking Yacht Club, Puget Sound Yacht Club in Seattle, as well as Totem Yacht Club. And so that's at least 20 people coming in on those boats. And then we've also got clubs from all around the area that'll be coming for the ceremony and our events throughout the weekend. We look forward to the ribbon-cutting ceremony that we understand will be happening for the grand reopening of the North Parking Lot. Super excited about that. We also coordinated this year with Des Moines' Farmers Market for a Mother's Day Farm and Craft Market that will happen at the Marina floor from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. We further coordinated this year with Destination Des Moines for a Wine and Art Walk throughout town. And both of those events are not only open to our visiting yacht clubs and friends, they're open to the public as well. Our formal flag ceremony at the yacht club starts sharply at 3:00 p.m. And we have extended an invitation to City Council and City Manager in the past for that. We repeat that invitation again today and hope to see you all there and any members of the public that are interested as well. It is a formal flag ceremony. We've got a little bit of pomp and circumstance. We've got some bagpipes, some saluting. It's kind of a fun thing. So come on down for that. It's only an hour from 3:00 to 4:00. And that's really it. Those are our public events for South Sound Open, and thank you again for having me.
Thank you. I'll reiterate, if you have not been to this ceremony, it's well worth your wait. It is, as a former veteran and being in military events and ceremonies on multiple occasions, these guys do it right and do it well. So it's worth your, worth your time to come. And thank you. With that, City Manager Mathias, I turn the floor to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to ask Bonnie Wilkins, if you would please give us an update on the Consor Group and their process with the council.
Thank you, Michael. Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm Bonnie Wilkins, the Chief Administrative Officer. I'm here just to give a quick update on Consor, the communication consultant that you guys approved a couple meetings back. Yesterday, we received the scope of work and proposed work plan. And I'll be reaching out to each and every one of you over the next couple days to schedule a time. They also gave us a timeline of when they're available for the interviews. And so I will be asking what works for you and scheduling you time to meet with them very soon.
Thanks, Council. Any questions about that? Okay, great. Well, we'll keep you up to date. And Bonnie will be in touch with you. Next, I'd like to ask Tim, our City Attorney, to give us an update on the Blake situation at the state and what that means for the city.
Thanks, Michael. So as the council is likely aware, the current drug laws in Washington are set to expire on July 1st of this year. The legislature was supposed to address this issue and create a new setup for the prohibition of drugs in their current session, but they were unable to reach an agreement on that. So if everything remains the status quo as of July 1st of this year, the possession of illegal drugs is going to be illegal, or is going to be legal. So that would include fentanyl, heroin, all sorts of other drugs. So the city has prepared an ordinance to prohibit the possession- So, uh, the city has prepared an ordinance to prohibit the possession of uh, these drugs in the city. We had um, we had put it on the agenda for tonight. And then the governor um, called for a special session of the legislature to meet um, for this one specific issue. So they are being tasked, tasked with updating the drug laws to make them effective July one. So what we've done is we've put our own ordinance on hold. We plan to set it for June first because it's a thirty-day ordinance. So we'll, if there isn't a resolution at the state level by June first, the city will be prepared. We'll have an ordinance um, that would, that would prohibit the use and possession of, of these drugs in the city. And that, that would be effective as of July first. Um, so we're covered. But clearly, we would like a statewide um, resolution. We wanna avoid patchwork um, laws amongst our local cities and across the state. So our preference would be state action. We are gonna have our legislative advocate, Anthony Hemstead, here next week to provide an update. So hopefully, he'll be able to provide an update on what's happened between today and next week at the state level. And hopefully, he'll have an optimistic report. But if there is no resolution, we will have something for the city to make sure that we're covered.
Thank you, Tim. Sure.
Has there been any um, reaching out to our surrounding cities to find out if they're intending to address it and any attempt at coordination? So at least in South King County, there might not be such a patchwork approach?
Yes. So we've been following um, the proposals from basically uh, cities across the state. We've looked at what um, some other of our neighboring cities are, are looking at doing. So we can certainly um, look at that, but there are a lot of differing opinions. Um, and that's what the state legislature is finding out, is that they can't get a, a majority on what is gonna work. And so um, just like at the state level, our local cities might not share the same opinions about um, illegal drugs, so. So we will have something prepared. It may not look like every city around us, but yes, we would like to have um, as much uniform, uniformity as possible.
And, and Councilmember, if I may add to that, um, we coordinate very closely with the um, legislative advocates for those cities. As well as with Association of Washington Cities that's taking a position on this. As well as the Washington Association of Police Chiefs, WASPIC. So there's multiple coordination going on to try to come to some, as Tim stated, uniform resolution. But in the meantime, we're in touch with our neighbors and, and, and other jurisdictions that have the same interest we do.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Um, so SCA had a Zoom meeting today, and um, there seems to be more agreement than disagreement. Which was uh, nice to see. But um, uh, Tim, there seemed to be a consensus in having a separate um, charge for possession versus use, and is that some, that going to be part of our uh, our ordinance, I mean, as, as you propose it?
Yes. Yes. So, possession versus use, that was one of the issues that was um, raised with the legislation that ultimately didn't pass, is whether or not possession of an illegal drug is enough to charge. Or does an officer have to witness them using the drug, which obviously makes it a lot more difficult? So I think our, our intent would be that possession um, would be sufficient to charge, knowing possession, right? Which is why the, the initial law got struck down um, a few years ago. But yeah, there's, there's a lot of moving parts right now. And I think um, you know, every, everyone likes, they like to agree on that they want a solution. That's kind of where we are right now. Everyone wants a solution. But then, when you start working into those details, there's a lot of different details that people wanna include that are non-starters for other groups. So, it's gonna be interesting. So I would say, it's gonna be interesting to watch, but if it doesn't get resolved, it would be unfortunate. But we will have something prepared for the city.
Do you have a firm definition of drug paraphernalia?
Yes.
Okay. Can you kind of, in twenty-five words or less? I mean, what, what, what does that mean for me as a laborer?
We have, we have drug paraphernalia already defined in our code, so I would refer you to that.
Thanks, Tim. Appreciate that. So moving on, two other issues.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did not see your end. Councilmember Oxiger has a question.
Yes. Uh, well, now Kent has already taken a position. So uh, and with the, let's say problematic border that we have with Kent. Do you see anything within the actions that they've taken that would cause, be rise for a problem for us?
Yeah, they, they've adopted an ordinance. And their ordinance um, is unique. It has some, some new legal pieces to it that would, that would require some changes to the way that we currently do things. That would require some changes to the way, um, you know, prosecutor's discretion, judicial discretion. So if we wanted to go that route, that would be a very, um, it would, it would be a change. And I, I wouldn't support that um, as a prosecutor. But ultimately, it's the council's, obviously, this is a legislative decision. So, so we'll see.
I might add to that, that the city administrator of Kent, in sending out their drafts, made specific reference and emphasized that a lot of what was in that ordinance was house cleaning and code cleaning for the, for the city of Kent. So a lot of that would be unrelated or irrelevant, not irrelevant, in regards to importance to Kent, but would not apply for the city of Des Moines.
Okay, I, I guess, uh, was there any consultation by Kent with us before they made their decision?
No.
Okay, moving on. Thank you. Two items that are on a consent tonight, I just wanna speak to briefly. One is there's an agreement, an ongoing, with agreement which we typically do each year with the Farmers Market. And um, I just wanna point out how, you know, we work closely with Kim and with Suzie and with Tracy as our representative on the board of the Farmers Market. And um, just how pleased we are to be able to support the Farmers Market and appreciate their efforts and the success of their efforts and the value it brings to the city. So that's, you'll see that on one of the consent items. And the other thing I wanted to talk about briefly, we also have on consent, um, the twenty-twenty-three passenger ferry pilot implementation. And those are operating agreements that we've established. Council had previously um, approved an allocation of a four hundred thousand dollars from our ARPA money. And that combined with anticipated fare box revenue, um, will, uh, will accomplish the goal of phase two. We're excited because we're adding more days to the, to the number of days during the week, all days except Monday. We've added more service to accommodate commuters. We've extended the season from now, it'll be approximately May twenty-third until the end of September to, to capture the entire Farmers Market um, duration of their efforts this year. And um, a couple of other things that came up that I just wanna advise Council. In the, in the context of, of assessing cost, and I would remind Council that last year, for phase one, we asked for, within the parameters of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And ended up spending about three hundred thousand. And so we were gonna send the Guinness World Book of Records, an example of government overestimating cost, okay? Doesn't happen a lot. But, but we did significantly, and we were happy with the outcomes and, and the ability to put that on. This year, a couple of things, in um, leasing dock space in Seattle for the extended timeframes and days and all of that. We were able to contract with the uh, King County Water Taxi for one of their docks, Dock Fifty. And that is approximately sixty-five thousand dollars, which was unanticipated what that number would be until it was nailed down. And additionally, the boat that we're um, leasing is um, made by the same company that we got the boat from last year. However, it's, it was mored in San Francisco, so it had to be transported up the coast. It's currently in that process. And that was an additional forty-eight thousand dollars. So what we're gonna do is um, utilize ARPA money to cover the difference, depending on the fare box revenue. But just for um, clear disclosure to Council, um, what the situation is. So, um, but the funds are available through ARPA. And uh, and so that, I think, were the key points, um, yeah, key points. I also, yes, wanted to mention that Peter Phillips, our consultant for the ferry services, is in the audience tonight. And today, wave your hand, man. Yeah, it's gonna go well, so you can identify. But uh, the, Peter had a meeting this morning with Maritime High School. And I think Councilmember Nutting, you'd mentioned that. I'm sorry, I, I think you were gonna bring that up. But um, the Maritime High School, and what we intend to do with the, with the high school, now that there's another class, so the kids are a year older, is be able to establish an intern program where they can work for the ferry service. And additionally, do other things around the marina. They get paid, they get taught some things, they get credit for this. And so we're really excited because those are exactly the types of relationships that we've tried to, you know, create with the high school on, on multiple levels. And I also wanna acknowledge Councilmember Nutting's support that we approached Maritime High School and actually see if we can't work that out. So they'll be our ambassadors on the dock, um, helping people on and off the boats. And then in the meantime, doing other tasks around the, around the marina. So I just wanted to uh, provide a little preliminary information. Mayor, that concludes the manager report. List any questions?
All right, seeing none. Thank you. Um, thank you very much. Let's uh, let's move on. With the city clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, twenty-twenty-three Des Moines Farmer Market Agreement. Item four, South Sound Boating Season Opening Day Proclamation. Item five, waste manage, or sorry, Hazard Waste Management Program Grant Agreement. Item six, twenty-twenty-three Passenger Ferry Pilot Implementation. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Second, for Deputy Mayor Buxton. Is there anyone that wishes to pull an item? Councilmember Harris.
Yes, item six, I believe, the ferry.
Okay. Yep, item six. All right. So on the consent agenda, we'll be voting on items one, two, three, four, and five. All those in favor? Raise your right hand. As it should be, the vote is unanimous. I'm gonna read the proclamation, and then we'll go into item six. Whereas, the city of Des Moines, actually, if you don't mind, Commodore, if you wouldn't mind coming up here. We might as well, you know, embarrass you a little bit more, right? Anyway, whereas, the city of Des Moines wishes to recognize and celebrate the twenty-twenty-three South Sound Opening Day of Boating Season. And whereas, the Des Moines Yacht Club annually hosts the South Sound Opening of Boating Season Ceremony, which gathers the many South Puget Sound Yacht Clubs, along with Des Moines residents and their surrounding communities to participate and enjoy this ceremony. Whereas, the South Sound Opening Day of Boating Season Celebration advocates for the safe enjoyment of boating and promotes the Des Moines waterfront amenities, serving the boating community now therefore. Now therefore, the city of Des Moines, Washington hereby proclaims May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, as this year's South Sound Opening Day of Boating Season, and it is signed this day, the fourth day of May, Mayor Matt Mahoney. So we look forward to seeing you on Saturday.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Moving on to item six. Uh, Councilmember Harris, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, first of all, uh, do we have a firm date for it, uh, its opening yet?
Okay, so the boat, as I mentioned, is in San Francisco, being transported up the coast. There was Coast Guard inspections in San Francisco, and when it arrives here, there will be additional Coast Guard inspections to ensure safety of the, of the vessel. There'll be some dry runs that are done. So what we're anticipating is uh, to start service on Tuesday, May twenty-third.
And, and what is the end date, or do we have a firm end date?
The end date is whatever twenty weeks from then is, which is approximately the end of September.
Thank you. Um, the only comment I have is that um, this is gonna lose over eight hundred thousand dollars. And um, and that's for, you know, twenty weeks. And uh, if, if the city has a future plan for investors or some other way to uh, move this forward, it's, it's just, it's uh, it's shameful to be spending two years on this unless we have a really good idea of uh, where it's going to be funded um, in an ongoing basis. This is just too much money to spend for an audition, and I'm sorry how that sounds, but um, that's, that's what this has been. It's an audition, and um, and I can't vote for it, so uh, that's basically it.
Councilmember, um, I would like to respond to that. So, last year, um, the city took it on itself to start this process. And it represents efforts in multimodal transportation, at the solution of regional transportation problems, ways to promote the city, enhance the marina. Ultimately, when the steps are built, it will continue to enhance the downtown, create demand, all these positive things. Last year, we had over fourteen thousand passengers in an eight-week period. The surveys that they did were extremely positive. People were really happy. I'll tell you a, an anecdote. I had, you know, I live in the city, in Zenith, and there was a homeowners association meeting that I went to, and people were kind enough to wait to the end of it. And then they said, what's up with the ferry service? I said, we're doing it again this year, and everybody in the room applauded. And that's a, that's a common response. So this year, what we're doing, so we took the leadership and did that as a city, without state, without state money, without any federally allocated money. We did use ARPA funds, but the point is, this year, phase two, extending the timeframe, extend, extending the service, addressing commuters, increasing the rates somewhat. Working with um, King County Water Taxi, who are the purveyors of that dock, who are potential future partners. I know that the mayor and deputy mayor have had discussions with uh, members of Tacoma City Council. One of the Pierce County representative, commission representatives, is a great fan of ferry service. Dow Constantine came to the city to do the opening of our commuter shuttle that connects the Angle Lake Station to the downtown. Dow is a fan of ferries, trust me, multimodal options. So this is building. We are building for the future and building for the future of relationships and financial relationships that will sustain this as an ongoing, permanent feature in Puget Sound. Thank you.
Councilmember Oxiger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, you, you said that we're, this is going for twenty weeks. The information in the packet on the fare back, uh, fare box revenues is based over twenty-four weeks. And it also shows that the highest uh, amount of money that would be recovered is in that final four weeks. Why is there, why is there discrepancy?
I don't know. I have to look at that. Wasn't aware of discrepancy. And I, and these are all, of course, uh, Councilmember, you're well aware, that these are all estimates. And there will be actuals, and we report back as we go.
Okay, but the, the estimates for the amount of fare box revenue is, is sixty thousand, at least sixty thousand dollars over what? $60,000 over what, you know, was indicated.
Understand. You know what, best I can do, we'll respond back to you.
So we are, we are scheduled for a 20-week test. It will not be 24.
Yes, it's 20 weeks. I'm looking at this revenue estimate. It looks like 20 weeks to me, but.
No, if you go into October 23, that's, it's it's set to end September 23, and now it's, there's that extra month in there. And if you count it out on the map, on the calendar, it's 24 weeks.
So that's five months.
Right.
To October 23. Five months with four weeks a month is 20 weeks.
If you count them out, you count out on the calendar, it's 24.
We can get back to you.
Okay, there's been, talk about rate box, or Fairbox rate adjustments. Do we have any idea what those are?
Peter, do you want to address the, what our fare structure is and compare it to what it was last year? Come to the podium, please. And compare it with what our last year was.
So I don't have the Excel spreadsheet at at hand right now, but I can tell you that 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 20-week period is contractually obligated by the operator. That's the number of weeks they're going to carry passengers. But they do have weeks built in there to get the boat up here and to get it route proven. So maybe that's where you're seeing the 24 weeks. But the contract is for 20 weeks, carrying passengers, and the passenger counts were predicated on the passenger counts that we had last year.
And Peter, the fare structure.
Oh, the fare structure. The fare structure is $13 round trip, or one-way for adults, and $8 for seniors and military. And children, we made some adjustments, I think.
Under 10.
Under 10 are free and over 10 are at the $8 rate.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, the, there's also in the contract with the operator, it indicates that the operator is responsible for the leasing of the landing in Seattle. Has that changed, and we're actually doing leasing?
Yeah, because we're dealing with the county, and the Des Moines is in the county, it was just more convenient and more appropriate for the city to enter into the agreement with the county, rather than an individual private operator.
Okay, everything else was being handled this, by us in the first place. Why was that a difference initially? Why was it put in the contract?
Can you rephrase the question? I don't quite understand what.
Okay, the contract from March 7 with the the ferry operator indicated that they would be responsible for leasing the space downtown.
On March 7, we didn't have a formal agreement with any individual terminal operator downtown. We had four applicants, if you will, four different entities, the city, the port, a private operator, and the county. And when we determined that the county was our best partner for a variety of reasons that the city manager alluded to, then we began negotiations with the county, and it was more appropriate for the city as a public agency to enter into the agreement than the private operator.
Okay, so the, a change was made in the contract then with the operator?
Um, I, I don't know that we.
Can you just clarify which part of the agreement you're referencing?
I'd have to run through it, but there's, because I'm looking at section 15C, it says the owner, the owner is the city, shall reimburse the operator for mortgage in Seattle. So the city, as the owner, was responsible for payment for mortgage because of the who we ultimately, or the the mortgage site that we ultimately selected, which is owned by King County, the county preferred to enter into an agreement directly with the city rather than an operator that they're they're not familiar with. So the city was always responsible for the mortgage. We have negotiated that agreement, and we're going to be executing it here shortly. And this this agreement has been signed with the operator?
No.
I had a few other questions.
If it's okay, I go through some of the other questions first.
Sure.
And then we'll get back to you. So I'll start with Councilmember Harris, I mean, not Councilmember Harris, you're going to be after, I'm going to go with Councilmember Steinmetz, Councilmember Pennington, Deputy Mayor Buxton, do you have any, you, it look, I, oh, I thought you, okay, I thought you had it sent in. Well, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll wait for that. So with that, I'll start with Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, because Harry and Harris tend to sound a lot alike. So, anyway, yeah, my, my question is, the $400,000 that came from the unspent ARPA funds, had that been previously designated to something specific? Or was that an amalgamation of different unspent monies? And can you explain that process a little bit to refresh my recollection and the recollection of people here?
Sure. Well, originally, what we did was, there was, you know, $9.2 million of ARPA funds. The council had originally designated those for a number and variety of activities, all the way from law enforcement to mental health services, support for nonprofits, support for marina redevelopment. And then, as COVID started to decrease, thank God, we were able to redirect, and we recommended to council to consider redirecting some of those ARPA funds to other activities. And so $400,000 from the ARPA money was redirected to provide passenger ferry service without the specific details as to how that money would be spent, but to accomplish that that purpose. So that was the origin of that 400,000. What we are able to do is, since the ferry service provides, you know, a great enhancement to our ability to redevelop the marina, and an element and function of that, we also have over $2 million designated for marina redevelopment, and we feel that using, you know, portions of that and small amounts relative to the 2 million will help accomplish the ferry service. So that's where the money comes from.
Okay. And the the 65,000, or six, was it 65,000 for mortgage in Seattle? That is a, the result of a contract with the county, King County, correct? And is that, I don't know if we had the bids from anybody else, but is that the best bid? Is that, how how was that price determined relative to the other bids that were out there?
Right. So there was, as as Peter mentioned, we had four different potential locations. I think one of them being the same Pier 66 near the edge water. But we felt that this was more centralized, further to the south, better for seniors and everyone else who are going to be walking or 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 wanting to engage in Seattle, closer to Pike Place Market, all that, Pike Place Market. So then we started having discussions with the county. Last year, we'd worked with the port, because that Pier 66 was the port of Seattle. And in discussions evolved, and then they said this is the price, and it was a good location, it was accessible. They pay for the the staffing of the the rece, receiving the ferry at their end, and then we pay for the mortgage. That was the number that they, we discussed and that they established.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Pennington, I'm going to go to you.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm going to go back to what I think Councilmember Jean was talking about. So I'm looking at the the document, and page 78 is where from on on Peter's consulting, it has operations, May 13 to September 24, and that's attachment two. And then on page 80, attachment three is the revenue estimate, and that goes May 23 to October 23. So those are the dates that that are, the two that I could see real quickly as I was going through this. So I guess I'd just like a little bit of clarity before we we move forward, and I know we were probably under a timeline relative to the implementation of the contract. But I I think it'd be good to have just a little bit more clarity, if we could take a little bit of time, whether we need to take a break and staff can look at it, or or however we want to do that. But I think probably some clarity would be in order.
Yeah, so the anticipated start date is May 23. But there are issues that need to be resolved. And so May 23 is our, is our, is our hope, but anything could come up with weather or inspections or any of that. Once they begin, they're going to run for 20 weeks. That's what we've contracted for. And so that that is the result of the negotiations that we've had. That is what's represented in the cost for the operating agreement. The revenue estimate, and I just counted the weeks here, so it looked like the revenue estimate would have got us through October, it's October 10. So we have, we have a couple extra days here on this revenue estimate. So we just have to ask a few more people to ride the boat while it's open.
So so I guess, you know, just so that that.
But I will, just to clarify how that, those revenue estimates came together. So the the revenue estimates align on a weekly basis with with the operating expenses. So they'll, they'll vary depending on when we start, whether it's the 23rd or or later. We probably won't start earlier because we'll, I think our Coast Guard appointment is on the 17th here. But they, they, they do align week to week, revenue and expenses. And to answer a previous question about why the revenue anticipation is higher at the end than it was at the beginning, is last year, we had more riders at the end than we had at the beginning. So we just, we matched those, those ridership numbers right on with what we did last year with the those calculation change in that we're we're charging $8 for military and seniors rather than five, and $13 rather than 10.
So is the October 23 date on on this attachment three on the revenue estimate, is it fair to say that it wouldn't operate past October 23? If it were a late start, that you wouldn't operate past 20 weeks, whatever that 20-week period is?
Current, the current contract has the operator committed to operating for 20 weeks. The operator's intent is to stay up here. So if if the service is successful and the and council determines that they want to extend past 20 weeks, I'm confident that the operator probably would do that.
Okay, so I, so what, I guess what I, what I'm looking for is is some clarity in in what we're authorizing. Are we authorizing, we're authorizing a 20-week period, whether that starts October 23, or our, sorry, May 23 or June 1? So it's a, it's a 20-week period. I mean, if there's delays and inspections and so on and so forth. And so I guess the confusion then is the October 23 date in the estimate resident, the revenue estimate? I think that's what's causing the confusion. Is that, is that a fair statement, Councilmember? So, so where did, where did that October 23 date come from?
I, I don't know where that, you know, I don't, as I said, I don't have that document in front of me. But but I do know that the, that the period is 20 weeks, and the the revenue and expenses align to the 20 weeks. I don't, I don't know, is it October 23, 2023?
You know, this is, this is a really easy solution, okay? Councilmember Oxiger, you get the award for the the minutia detail of the century, but that this refers to 2023, not the date October 23. So whatever portion of October is utilized to get to the 20 weeks.
Well, so, all right, so that that makes sense then. So thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, what he's saying is that the the ridership in October, which is right now, how many days, 10 or so forth, maybe two weeks, is one of the highest generating revenues and highest riderships when it should be half. It should match more of May than does October, is all. Anyway, well, just a second. Are you, are you complete? And then I I promised Councilmember Harris, but if it's okay with Councilmember Harris, can I go back to Councilmember Oxiger first?
Question.
Sure, go ahead, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have to disagree with the, with your, your estimate on the, on the, that being the year, not the, the date of the month, because below this, you have calculated out Fairbox revenues and also the numbers of adults, children, and seniors, military coming in here. And the the numbers are basically the same as the previous month. So, you know, I, that, the, that is not, by the way, the pronunciation, my name is Oxiger.
I'm sorry.
Oxiger.
Oxiger. Thank you.
Councilmember, so these are estimates, okay? One of the things that we're going to try and establish, and this will be important for the future of potential partnerships, is in economic terms, establish the elasticity of demand. So by raising the fares, what will that do to ridership? We anticipate that it will not do a lot to ridership because they were so low last year. So we've increased them moderately at the, at, at best. But these are estimates, and we will track actuals as we go, and we'll inform council what those actuals look like as we go. So this is an estimate. If you disagree with the estimate, that's fair. But that that's what our estimate is. And this will contribute to the cost of the agreements, along with the $400,000, which is the majority of the cost.
This, I just did the quick math here, based on October and so forth, the, basically the revenue instead of 286.7 in estimate, based on this information, simply makes it around 260, 256,000 to be exact. So we're still talking in the ballpark, and as you mentioned, it is an estimate. Do you have other questions, sir?
Well, except that it does say here that the estimate is for that time period is $59,658.
And my comment was that just cut it in half, and you're probably there. And it's an estimate.
Why would you cut it in half?
October, it's going to have about two months of ridership.
And and you've got, you're only counting for two months of ridership on on May.
You're talking two weeks of, you're talking two weeks of May, it's 26,000. We have a, we have a higher ridership, as we've proven in the past year, where it's 60,000. I'm just saying it's about 30,000 is a good estimate for, of revenue in October, based on the information you provided. And I'm saying all it does is change it to 256 to six, to 60,000. We're talking a reduction of only that amount, roughly $30,000 from the estimate that was in our packet. The the information, it's a $30,000 difference, that's it.
I invite anybody to look at the figures and come up with that.
All right, well, I do it for a living. So anyway, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, so I picked the wrong week to forget a migraine pill. You know, it's, I'm not a rocket surgeon, but it's about 120 days from May the 23 to September the 23. And boats, you know, they're, they're a bus, they they garner revenue based on days of service. So it's 120 days of service, weeks schmeeks. But the bottom line is, this does not include, the contract does not include mortgage, it does not include fuel, which is like those together are the biggest cumulative costs. And so I, you know, and so all of this jazz about how little it lost or whatever, or how well it did, it's, it's, it's all a fugazi, okay? I mean, in other words, this arguing over October, whatever, is like the least of the problems. It will lose tremendous, if it loses this much money over 120 days of service, okay? Again, it's an audition, it's a two-year audition, and if you don't show me legit suitors by September, it's. it's, it's not going to look good. The other thing, there are a lot of ways to make human beings happy, okay? Yeah, you can give them a cheap ferry ride, you could also give them a pony, deliver a pizza. You can do a lot of things to waste a million, two million dollars of public money. But the thing is, regardless of what you spend, and I frankly, I don't care how many people were thrilled to have a ride into Seattle, because the notion is to bring money here, not to bring, to give an entertaining day to people here for eight bucks, okay, on public money. That's millions of dollars that won't go to the park, to the services, to the roads, to the everything. This is, this is public money. This is not meant to be, you know, so it's like I'm all about putting a lost leader on the front shelf space, but, um, but unless there is something in here that is legitimately talking about next year and the sustainability of it, this is irresponsible and frankly, I apologize for, I thought I was just going to say eight hundred grand we're losing and then we voted and that would be it, because that's just the fact. And then it went on and I'm sorry, we should just vote, all right, and, and be done with it. It's just, literally the boat has sailed.
Deputy Mayor Buxton, would you like to make a motion?
I move to ratify and approve the operation agreement with P R O P S F in the amount of five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and six dollars to operate the passenger ferry pilot program for twenty-twenty-three and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement substantially in the form as attached.
Do I have a second? I have a second from Councilmember Nutting. Any discussion before we take a vote, Councilmember or Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't make a comment during, earlier, I used it, I assumed it was more of a question time. This, we're spending less money than la- last year when we decided to move forward with this project. It was more money and less than half the amount of time and we passed it because we were excited for this pilot. We thought the, the public would want it, our citizens would want it. So we're, if we pass this tonight, we're, we're passing a better deal than we passed last year. The response this year was way more than I expected. I am so pleased with the public response to that decision we made last year, and this is a better deal. I'm, I can't be, couldn't be more thrilled to go ahead and, from the, this is, this conversation, I appreciate the, the dynamics and the a little bit in the weeds, I usually am accused of being that, but from a high level, we are making a better decision this year than last year. We've got regional interest, we already have, um, response in our business community that says this is a valid economic driver into our community. And the city manager was very eloquent in talking about the possibilities for the future, talks for the future, hope for the future, and examples of other kinds of multimodal transportation options that have been really successful with the same model that we're thinking for this. So I, I couldn't be happier to move forward, thank you.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yeah, I, on the fuel question, I found here under vessel and system management's, what the operator's responsible for, various things, operating parts and consumables, fuel and lubrications, and it goes on to some other stuff. So they're responsible for the fuel, not us.
No, no, we are.
Are we? Oh, my, my mistake then. Then I guess we are.
I, I'll interject, you know, it, it's not a loss. When you look at, we're making investment in our community. One of the things we noticed was our businesses, particularly our restaurants, definitely benefited from the event. In fact, we got an email from one that on, I think it was the tenth of September, they'd already made their September month. We, as we move forward, we're looking for economic drivers and this is definitely one. And it's, it's that, we are bringing people here to spend their dollars. Is, much as we're sending people from our communities, it's like we can, they can go to a park and they can go this. We are offering a service to send our residents who are taking their families, enjoying a beautiful boat ride, enjoying the sound, and being able to go to the waterfront and the market in Seattle. There's a great value to that, that we're, we're providing. And it's incentive, we're showcasing our city. If you forget, when this was done last year, every news station, every radio station, newspaper, tons of articles got us promotional value that put Des Moines on the map. And the price of that, I think it was estimated over a hundred thousand dollars last year, and I think it's going to be greater this year. It's something that I talked to Senator Kaiser about, as well as Rep. Orwell and others. They want us to be one of the premier places. They were talking about these, the Bellingham Boat Company that makes the electric boats. The biggest thing we all had a sore spot was, is they sent the first one to San Francisco when it should be here. So they're talking about means and ways to making this work too, because we will need partners in this as we move forward. Deputy Mayor Buxton and I, we've been speaking, some of the Tacoma City Council members. Their biggest debate right now is do they want it at Point Ruston or downtown or both? So this is going to be some great assets that I see in the future. But bringing business here to our community and then offering our residents a great experience and service to showcase and brag about our town with their family members and other residents. One of the other advantages here is that the new dock placement, one of the callouts from Wesley and Jutson was the one at Bell Harbor was a little difficult for them, especially some of our elderly people to get through that. This has been a, we've made an accommodation to meet their needs. So there's some great assets here. Also, as a, somebody that goes into Seattle for commuting, I'm eager to try this out and test it out and give you feedback. Our community did an excellent job of providing some great feedback. But all in all, when you listen to the voices of the people in this particular case, it's, it's ninety-nine to one strong. And it's a, it's a great, it's, it's great for us to be able to provide something and, and invest in our city's future. Any other comments before I take a vote, Councilmember Oxiger?
I apologize that you had to watch this, you know, discussion, there was obvious confusion. The, the comments were made last December first that I had requested that this be put through Transportation Committee. And I was assured that no, it was going to go through municipal services and, and, uh, economic development. This is the type, what, I guess I'm objecting to, you know, the process here. It has not gone through any committees. None of these questions that have been raised today could have, you know, they all could have probably been answered then. And then this appears on the consent calendar, which the purpose of the consent calendar is we're basically in agreements with any, with everything, just pass it through. I think this is, you know, an example of how, you know, it's, it's an abuse of the consent calendar process and it's a, an abuse of the way that we should, the council should have the opportunity to explore these issues before having to come and make you witness the sausage, the sausage making, so, thank you.
All right, with that, let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting and myself. All those opposed, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxiger. Motion passes five-two. All right. Somebody like to read the motion for the next one?
Uh, I don't have the second motion on the front page.
For brevity, you do? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve the operations management agreement with Maritime Consulting Partners in amount not to exceed one hundred and eight thousand dollars and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement substantially in the form as attached.
Second.
All right, any discussion before we take a vote? Seeing none, all those in favor of motion two, please raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Penton, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting and myself. All those opposed, I see Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxiger. All right, we're moving on to new business with the housing action plan.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have presentation this evening on our housing action plan, which is, uh, will become part of the comp plan. And Denise Lathrop will initiate this discussion and then we'll have our consultant here to, to fill in the blanks, so to speak. And the, um, the, there has so far been opportunities for community input. There will be a SEPA process that will encourage community input. There are some timeframes associated with this where we will be bringing it to council for first and second reading on, on June first and June eighth. The deadline, I think, is the seventeenth, is that right?
We have to have it adopted by the fifteenth and then we close out our contract.
So if, if necessary, there could be a special meeting on the fifteenth, but hopefully we get it done on the first and the eighth. And so at any rate, we're going to get a relatively brief briefing on this tonight. This information that you see in this presentation will be on the website and so council, you're certainly more than welcome to visit that if you, you know, read it, if you have questions. But it, it's a very, I think, well-done process and I'd like to compliment Denise, who had to pick up, pick this up after Eric Lane had left for family-related options. But he was working on this and Denise has picked it up and our consultants and, and I think they've done a very comprehensive job. But with that, I'll turn it over, thank you.
Great, thank you, Michael, and good evening, Mayor and city council members. Denise Lathrop, Community Development Director. So, um, tonight we are going to do a little bit of a high-level summary on the project purpose, overview of our housing needs assessment, the public engagement we've done to date, and what that housing action plan will actually look at as well as next steps. You will see a lot of tables and charts in this presentation, however, we aren't going to do a deep dive. One of the reasons we've done this is that we will be posting this on our project website so that community members can review this information. And then as Michael indicated, we will have a SEPA process, so there'll be a public comment period before council holds a public hearing on this. So the housing action plan is basically going to be a roadmap for the city to implement our housing goals and assure that we have an approach for acquiring and retaining housing that is affordable to all of our residents. There are key components of the plan include a housing needs assessment, public engagement, and goals and strategies. As you know, we received a Department of Commerce grant and per the Department of Commerce guidance, this HAP or Housing Action Plan, that's short for Housing Action Plan, will provide direction to us when we update our housing element of the comprehensive plan, which is kicking off right now. With that, I am actually going to turn it over to Wayne Carlson from A H B L. And they are supporting this work as well. Who's not here is Echo Northwest and they did a lot of the data crunching for the housing needs assessment. And they will be here for the public hearings. So with that, I'll hand it off to Wayne.
Excellent, thank you very much. Recognize many of you from some of the, the public engagement activities that, that we had in support of the preparation of this plan. So as Denise indicated, there's really kind of three inputs into this, to this process. One of them being the housing needs assessment, which is really an examination of not only the demographic characteristics of the city, but also the housing stock. So just some high-level findings, as, as everybody in this room probably knows, median, uh, price of, of housing has increased substantially. That two hundred and fifty-seven percent that you see there outstrips King County by, by a wide margin. And also, there's been some changes with respect to the, the characteristics of the, of the community as well. So, so families making less than, say, twenty-five thousand dollars per year has decreased over time and also families or households making more than a hundred thousand have, have increased substantially. And what, what Denise indicated, we're, we're going to be doing a lengthy, uh, meeting with you at, at your May twenty-fifth Economic Development. So we'll be able to go into quite a bit of deep, depth and detail then. Other, other housing inputs from the, or findings from the, the housing needs assessment is that, that the city, based on the expiration of restrictions, is due to lose approximately a quarter of its, uh, low-income restricted housing stock in the last ten years, excuse me, in the next ten years. As you're probably aware, most of the housing stock is predominantly single-family detached. However, in the last decade, there's been a substantial amount of new multifamily that has been developed. And really, there's a, a great need in providing housing opportunities for households making eighty percent of AMI or less. This chart, a- as you see with, with the packet from the, the housing needs assessment, really just shows that there are a variety of income groups with, within the city, ranging from extremely low to, to high income and that there is a real need to provide housing options and, and housing opportunities for people in the, in the low and very low income categories. One of the things that, that we mentioned in our open houses that again, many of you were at is, you know, it, it's, it's one thing to kind of talk about households just generally, but, but it's, it's always good to, to draw that connection similar to what Ms. Hamilton brought up that, just in the, in the public comment. And that is that what we're trying to do, and you see, when you, when you see here, you know, very low or low income, these are the kind of folks that we're talking about when we, when we talk about, you know, the, the median area income in, in King County. So what we're trying to do is make sure that there's opportunities for local dental assistants, cooks, firefighters, teachers to have, be able to have housing options and opportunities here in the city. And as you could see here, a- a- and this is, this, this is not, does not distinguish between renters and homeowners, but there are quite a few families that are kind of cost burdened or severely cost burdened. And that means they are spending over thirty percent of their incomes on housing and/or utilities. And, and you can see that, that trend in Des Moines from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty has gotten worse, whereas in King County and Washington State, it's gotten ever so slightly, um, let, you know, better. So that, that's another reason why this is important to provide, uh, opportunities for additional housing that's affordable to the city's residents. A- as you can see here, this is really talking about the housing stock and, and you can see that, uh, really the housing stock for the, for the city really reflects the, the county as a whole. They both are at fifty-three percent of the housing stock as being single-family and roughly about thirty-five percent, thirty-four, thirty-five percent being, um, uh, multifamily. So, you know, and then there's some slight variations elsewhere. What, uh, in, in, what Denise indicated in, in her presentation and what the, the purpose of a, a housing needs assessment is, is to begin to, at these initial stages, develop strategies for accommodating housing growth. And the Department of Commerce and, and, and King County really through the, the allocation of, of density and jobs for your periodic update, has allocated thirty-eight hundred new dwelling units that would be created in the city of Des Moines by, uh, twenty forty-four. So in, in any event, and there's needs across the spectrum to accommodate the city's residents. I also wanted to briefly summarize the public engagement. We had a, an online survey and so the community was encouraged to participate in an, an online survey. And we had kind of really three opportunities for engagement. So the, the online survey was one. And we had that open initially from November fifteenth through the end of- And we had that open initially from November 15th through the end of January and then we reopened it in March so we could get maybe a, a little bit better Spanish-speaking responses because we felt like there, there was some lacking there. We had 213 responses and it was available both online and on paper versions. We received responses from all of the, the city's neighborhoods, Central Des Moines being the, the one where we got the, the biggest response, but we had good response from Woodmont, Woodmont, Zenith, North Hill, et cetera, all the way down to North Central. Of the, of the folks that responded, 75% of the, the response were from folks that live in detached, single-family dwelling units, whether that is as a rental or as a homeowner. So the, the written response to the, the survey skewed a little bit more towards the, the single-family residents than, say, the housing stock itself. So in that survey, we asked several questions and one of those was, "In your most recent search for housing, did you face any of the following challenges?" And so the top four that we received were trying to find a home that they could afford, followed by a home in an area that they wanted to live, something that is in good physical condition and safe, and that had an adequate number of bedrooms. And then, kind of on down the line, you know, housing that would accommodate pets and near public transit were also responses that we heard. We also asked a question of the respondents, "Please select the top three actions that you believe are most important to address in the, the Housing Action Plan." And, you know, kind of far and away would be looking at ways of providing for more affordable housing options. Second, and this was also very, very strong, was, actually, this is actually third, I apologize for the sort there, but preventing displacement was 74 responses and then creating more environmentally sustainable housing got 75. But other strong responses were addressing social equity, increasing housing supply, and, and providing more small housing types, you know, structures and, and options that have less than four bedrooms. So we also asked for, you know, when, which of the following housing types do you think the, the city needs more of? And we had images of different types of, of structures, accessory dwelling units, single-family detached, buildings with four or more, basically apartments, townhomes, some of the middle housing, the duplex, triplex, fourplex type housing, cottage housing, as was mentioned earlier this evening, and attached, single-family. And so the top responses that we received were cottage housing and accessory dwelling units, detached, single-family, and as well as the middle housing with 50, 51 responses. And then townhomes and apartments also were, were just behind some of the, the middle housing. And kind of maybe the, the one distinction that we did hear is we, we probably heard a little bit stronger preference for some of the multifamily in some of our in-person events as opposed to the survey. But this is a compilation of both, the surveys we received in person on paper as well as the electronic responses from the city's website. This is just a, kind of a simple word cloud, but of, of just the, the terms that we heard. Any other comments? This was just kind of open-ended that, that they wanted to, to share. And so the words that we heard were an important, you know, need for additional housing, just the term housing itself. But you'll see some other connections in the importance of housing just to the fabric of the city. So the, the Marina, grocery stores, you know, transit, you know, buses. So the idea that, that these, these housing opportunities would be then linked with other important parts that make a, a city a, a kind of whole. So then finally, we, we also did a series of stakeholder interviews and these are with organizations that, that partner with, with residents of, of the city and sometimes partner with the city itself that, that provide for low-income housing or support for folks that are looking for affordable housing. So we interviewed Highline Public Schools, the King County Housing Authority, CIMAR, El Centro, and you can see the, the rest of the list. We heard many of the same kind of issues and concerns and themes when we kind of summarized what, what the stakeholders indicated, and that's in your packet, but issues related to affordability, very, very strongly issues related to minimizing the displacement of, of people, increasing supply, and then certainly access to housing. And when we talk about access to housing, they're talking about for vulnerable folks, you know, folks that maybe have a criminal record or bad credit, figuring out a way to get them into housing. So now what we've kind of begun to do is look at ways that, that we can incorporate what we heard, the, these themes, into goals, policies, and implementation strategies, which, which ultimately, in one way, or one form or another, will be, you know, integrated into the, the city's housing element of its comprehensive plan. So the, the goals and policies that have been considered are, are ways of incorporating kind of local, private and public partnerships to accomplish the goals, kind of reminding all of, you know, everybody in the audience, but that the city doesn't directly produce or control housing. That's an important kind of caveat when we're, when we're kind of framing some of the, the goals, policies, and implementation strategies that are on the, the following, the, the following slides. Next, the, the analysis kind of really resulted in five major goals and objectives and 11 strategies that, that we're going to just, you know, kind of briefly introduce, but that we'll be talking to you in much greater detail on May 25th. So we have some strategies that are associated with minimizing displacement. So again, that was one of the themes I mentioned that we heard both in the survey, also in the in-person events, as well as with the stakeholder interviews. And those would be trying to minimize the, the loss of existing affordable housing. So minimizing physical displacement, economic displacement, and really looking at ways of providing information and resources to residents and landlords to, to, to really link them up for, with, with programs that, that support vulnerable residents. We, we have a, a variety of strategies associated with really trying to provide accessibility to, to housing for vulnerable populations. And so this is really kind of partnership-type roles with, with nonprofits that, that may provide or essentially kind of co-sign leases with landlords for, for folks that, that may not otherwise qualify because of, you know, credit issues or, or the like. And then we have some strategies that we'll be discussing here, like I say, in a couple of weeks, related to increasing the supply of housing. So certainly, that's an issue, both with respect to the, the growth that will occur within the city over the 20-year plan, planning horizon for the, the city's comprehensive plan, and the accommodation of those dwelling units, so 3,800 dwelling units that have, have been allocated to the city. But to, to continue to provide some of those partnerships and relationships with Skip. You know, as was discussed earlier, trying to remove regulatory barriers that, that might also kind of inhibit increases in supply. And then providing incentives for the construction of those types of housing units that you, as the city council deem as desirable, such as the, the way Kent, or excuse me, the way Renton has kind of pre-approved ADU designs kind of off the shelf. And then finally, the, the kind of last category is really kind of trying to preserve, preserving and building new affordable housing. And so looking at, again, expedited development review, perhaps, you know, opportunities with subsidizing permit fees, modifying or exploring changes to, to parking standards. So what you see here is there is some overlap, as, as you would expect, because these, these aren't necessarily discrete themes or, or categories, but there are strategies that we'll be exploring and, and talking with you more in, in a few weeks. So in terms of next steps, you see a little check mark here this evening is a briefing to the city council. The intent is, we're going to be doing an environmental review and publishing a SEPA determination at, at the end of next week and at that time, a, a draft of the document will be publicly, publicly available for, for comment, as the city manager indicated. And then we will be back before the, the city council's Economic Development Committee on May 25th. And then again, as Denise said, a first reading on, on June 1st and a, and a second reading and hopefully adoption on, on June 8th and the grant period commencing on June 30th. So with that, Denise and I are, are available for, for questions if you have any.
I believe the city manager wants to interject before you take questions.
Wayne, thank you. Just two points that for council and everyone really to keep in mind is that the provision of, and even the regulatory facilitation of housing development in the city. Two things. One, that's a function of partnerships with our utilities and other jurisdictions. And it's important to remember, it's not just on the city, it's not just on the zoning, but it's on the water district and the sewer district and the utilities and PSE and all of that, to, to be able to coordinate sufficient access and strength of resources for, for, for utility capacity. And then the second point I want to make is that all of these things are intertwined. So this is a regional issue, not just Washington State, but throughout the country. And the, the critical nature of affordable housing in order to make sure everyone has decent living conditions that they can support, right, which is the critical component. But the way that that all plays together is, for example, we want to do Marina redevelopment. That's going to create demand, it's going to spur development in the downtown, it's going to increase the amount of retail. We want the people that work in those retail jobs to live in the city, have their kids in the city, not commute from far distant, outlying areas, spending an hour or two a day going in each direction for minimal wages. So affordable housing helps our economy. And one last point that was made when we first had Nancy back us here and we talked about the need to be, participate with Skip, right, was one of the critical components is that a diversity of income in your economy is a healthy thing because different levels of income purchase different levels of products. And so with the diversity of products and product mix and retail opportunities and all that, you can end up with a strong economy that you won't only have if you have the upper echelon expenditures there or incomes. So it has value on multiple levels and this, what you guys are talking about right now, to me, one of the most critical aspects of the future of the city. Appreciate the work you've done.
All right. Questions? I'm going to start with Deputy Mayor Buckson and then you, Councilmember Steinmetz.
Thank you for this presentation. Looking forward to the, the results at the end of this. So two, two kind of questions in regard to the last couple of slides. I think that you showed, you showed the two charts that talk about the, the approaches. And so I'm wondering, in the end, the decisions that we're going to, we're going to have two public hearings, is this, are these items right here going to be the items that we will be deciding? This is a, this is a, kind of like, this is a vision statement that I agree with or that the council agrees with, so yes, this is our Housing Action Plan and I agree with these statements? Is that what that will be?
Yeah. And I think the thing is here is that we, you know, this is based on what we've heard through, through the surveys and that, in terms of what the community expressed a need for. And so we've tried to formulate those into strategies. And I think the other thing is that it's like a toolbox that we can draw from on ways that we can facilitate housing creation. So I think that's another piece of it. And we'll be drilling down deeper when we get into the comp plan update. So this is sort of the roadmap to get us there?
And, I was going to say, and as you consider these on, on the 25th, there'll be, there'll be more detail to those to show you so that you can understand what is, what would be the expected city's kind of role or obligation with these versus partners. So there'll, there'll be more detail with that that you'll see on, on the 25th, just so that you, you can make a, you know, an informed decision what this means to you.
So I, that leads to the next question. I'm, so once we, let's say we get past those hearings and we have developed kind of a vision statement about, you know, what we've heard from our public and what we want to provide, when it comes to the comp plan, then do you expect that we're going to have a, a suite of code amendments or something that will match some of these? Do you, what, what's your expectation there? How will this guide that?
I mean, I could see there could be some code amendments that take place. I mean, we would, one of the things that other jurisdictions have, have done that have come out of the Housing Action Plan would be that they would evaluate parking standards for low-income housing, or they would look at opportunities to create pre-approved plan, or what was it called again?
Registered plans.
Registered plans, yes. And so, like, the example from Renton is you can go onto their website and say, "I want ADU accessory dwelling unit, I want to build Model 1A on my property," and there's a set of building plans that go. So it, the intent is that it's been developed to facilitate a really quick review and so it saves time and money in terms of permitting and getting, getting to construction in a very timely manner. And so those are some examples of what would come out of it. And, you know, the comp plan too is also a roadmap that we implement and so there may be things that get added as priorities for our planning work program. And so that would be tied to our annual or biannual budget process where we're going to be allocating time for planning to make some code amendments to bring forward to implement some of these strategies.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Steinmetz.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say I went to one of the early public meetings up at Highline College on the, on the Housing Action Plan and I thought it was absolutely fantastic. I mean, you put on a very good presentation. I think the, the audience was very engaged and I, I think there was a good process to get that kind of public engagement, you know, that, that we really do need. But I'm, as I'm sure you're aware, the, the state legislature decided to eliminate single-family, detached, single-family zoning. And so I think that creates some very strange incentives now, particularly within a city like ours, where people who are going to come in and build have the incentive to go build four units on a lot that once had one unit, but they're going to do it in the most expensive place they can get because they can get much more for those units. And what I'd like to suggest is that we need some ideas on how to, you know, push those developments back a little further away from the water, frankly, so that we can build a stock of essentially attached, single-family housing and, and, you know, duplexes, quadruplexes, et cetera, where people can afford them. And so I, I'm puzzled by how to attach that and I'm looking, hoping that you can come up with some good suggestions.
Yeah, we've been, I mean, a lot of the planning directors in King County have been sort of trying to get their brains around how we are going to tackle the new legislation. I think for cities of our size, some of the parameters are focusing it more around transit station areas, which has been the guiding principles under Vision. And so that was always my angst with the bill that went, the middle housing bill was that it sort of didn't consider some of those, like, well, sorry to stutter here, what Michael was saying about infrastructure, you know, when we... You know, when we are planning for density around high-capacity transit, part of that is looking at, do we have the transportation infrastructure? Do we have the utilities? And so it helps utility districts and others plan for that because they know where it's happening, whereas in some places where this bill will be in effect, it's like spreading peanut butter and it, you know, you're gonna end up with more people driving because they aren't in close access to transit. So we will be thinking about that, and it's probably gonna be taking a deeper dive when we get to the comp plan update process too.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Um, so, um, is there a term of art for the length of time that homeowners spend, you know, uh, living at their residence? Um, you know, it's not tenure, that's used in a different context here, but I'm just wondering, is that something that the city tracks or the consultants track?
We don't track that, but we know there is a desire for people to age in place or age in their community. And so we've heard that where people may not, they're, they may not need as big of a home, but they wanna stay in their community and they wanna have some other housing choices, which is some of what the middle housing bill was also looking at, where people are staying in the community but transitioning to different types of housing.
Where does Wesley or, you know, like, uh, like the Wesley cottages and so on, where do they fit into this matrix? Um, I mean, are they considered ownership or, uh, you know?
Um, I don't know. Most of it is probably people buy in to those facilities, and so there, it's depending on the types of units that you're living in. You might buy into a cottage type or a townhome type situation, but I don't know the details of that, but we could definitely reach out to Wesley for that information.
I'm just curious where they show up in the number of, you know, available units. I mean, because it's, you know, they have so many different configurations. And, uh, the other thing is, I didn't see anything about section eight. Is that something in your thinking about, um, increasing availability of that kind of thing, or is that just maxed out forever?
Yeah, yeah, uh, with, with, with section eight, you know, that, that would be a, uh, obviously a resource to the, those, uh, folks in the, the extremely low and, um, very low categories, uh, but, but obviously it would be for them to use for rental units. So we're, you know, through this process, we're, we're really trying to, uh, increase both supply of additional homes for, uh, owner occupants as well as, 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 as rental units. Um, you know, because there's still, you know, I, I think there's an important emphasis also on, you're trying to increase homeownership, you know, in the, you know, that, that 50 to 80, uh, category, which is, you know, considered, uh, low. But those are the folks that we said were the, the teachers, the firefighters, et cetera, because I think it provides for, uh, quite a bit of, uh, stability for, for, for the community.
Okay, so just, um, you know, 10 seconds rhetorically, um, not another, uh, living space should be built in this, uh, town without reinstating our sound code from 2012. It is unconscionable to me that any home be built without, um, the same quality of noise reduction, um, that one would have gotten with the port package. And that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, quick comment. I'm, I'm concerned this may almost align slightly with what Councilmember Harris just said. Um, but, no, no, I think your migraines are contagious. Um, but at any rate, I just wanna make the point that what's really critical in this whole discussion about affordable housing, and I know the council's aware of this, and it's just really critical to keep in mind, is that substandard housing is not affordable housing. And because the quality of a house may not be insulated, may not be effective, may not have what's needed, doesn't make it affordable, it makes it substandard. And people with low incomes deserve whatever access to quality living conditions that can be provided.
My, my concern is that as you get townhomes, as you get attached units of any kind, um, it just becomes more and more critical, uh, that, um, you know, anyone within the DNL 65, um, you know, the biggest, what's the number one with a bullet for any apartment dweller is, you know, they're like, they can hear their neighbors. Well, you know, you also can hear those 747s, so, thank you.
Um, I, Councilmember Steinmetz did a good job of talking and addressing middle housing. I'm concerned about that. Uh, parking solutions, I think, are gonna be interesting to see the results on that because, um, what I've seen proposed, and we already have a parking problem. One of the ones that concerns me the most is the time it's gonna take to have utilities be able to accommodate some of these solutions. I know on North Hill, most of the, they're on septic systems rather than tied to the sewer, and it's expensive to do so. I'm, and, and I know, I think Zenith has the same problem in anything in close proximity to the drainage, uh, that would go into our sound. So I could see us being handcuffed for some time until a lot of the utilities can catch up. So it's not as simple as putting an ADU in the backyard when you, you know, you're gonna pollute the soil, or you can't get an extra water connection or something like that. And, and, you know, water as well. And in certain areas, uh, the infrastructure, as I've been told, is not exactly what it could be, and we have some challenges there. So it'll be interesting to see that. I know, I like the fact that this information will partner with them and give them a list of the things that they'll have to do as well. Um, so I'm interested, I'm really looking forward to the, um, public hearings in, in next month. So thank you for the hard work. I thought it was excellent.
Thank you.
Um, all right. All right. All right. Moving on, this is the time for sole purpose of proposing new business items that have not previously been before council for discussion on future agendas. This is not a time for questions about old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates or previously discussed business to the city manager anytime. Do any councilmembers have new business that they would like to propose? Um, I, okay, I got Councilmember Nutting, and then I'll go to you, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have two, um, this evening that I'd like to propose. Um, and, uh, I'd like to read a statement prior to my proposal, if that's okay with you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, "I was deeply disturbed by the recent vandalism that occurred in our downtown. I am long-term, longtime supporter of small businesses, and I know the difficult, how difficult it is to be a small business owner, especially on the heels of what we just went through with the pandemic. I also believe it is important to have an attractive and well-kept business district. I would like to propose that the city creates a program to offer grants up to $1,000 to our local downtown businesses that have been impacted by vandalism. These funds could be used to fix broken windows, remove graffiti, graffiti, pay deductibles, and other projects that would beautify the downtown." I'm proposing using, excuse me, $25,000 of existing ARPA funds for this purpose, and if I have support of two or more councilmembers, I would ask administration to bring back their ideas for a program of this type to the next, in our next opportunity.
We won't need a motion. We just, do we have two people to support that?
Excellent.
All right. We have all, it looks like good report of us, so we'll, we'll give that to staff.
Thank you.
And, you know, not to jump the gun, but Rochelle's here in the audience, and I know that that program is essentially designed, so we look forward to bringing it to you. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think it's timely. I went down and talked, spoke to several of the owners, particularly after the most recent incidents, and, um, this'll go a long ways to help them, particularly covering out-of-pocket deductibles and stuff like that against their insurance.
Well, and if I may comment, I think it pairs well with, um, the fact that we've got, um, our CSO, uh, Baderman, um, with the pickup and, and plywood and tubefors to help board things up too, so.
And you said, did you have a second, you said?
I did have a second one that I was able to talk.
All right, uh, if it's, uh, we, Councilmember Harris, with your permission, can I do two with him, or do you want me to go back? Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, I made some notes here, and basically, uh, I was able to speak with, uh, the COPE Amalgamated Transit Union, um, ATU Local, um, 587, that basically, it's a long way of saying, these are the people that operate and work on the metro buses through downtown here and, and provide our service, and also the DART, uh, 635 service, um, from light rail down. And, um, it is, uh, they're moving towards electrification of most of their fleet, and they have a south station which is in Taquilla and a north station which is Seattle area. Um, and basically, if we put in, I guess my, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the words here. Um, we could put in a couple of charging stations on city property somewhere where they could, they, they get, they get an entire day, a 12-hour shift out of one, um, one tank of diesel. They get a little under 150 miles out of one charge on these buses. And so, um, the, the drivers have got to either park that bus and grab a diesel bus or park that bus. Hopefully there's one's charged because they've got 30 buses and 10 chargers, um, and that's because PSE wouldn't allow them to put any more chargers in, and out of those 10, six chargers are operational because of some of the needs. Anyways, my, my proposal is, is that, um, we remand this, um, to install a few chargers somewhere on, or research the ability to install chargers, um, and basically have an area for them to park a bus, they'd be able to drive their four hours, drop their bus off, plug it back in, and pick up another bus. Um, and this is for the A-line and the service that Des Moines would get, so we'd have fully electric buses running through our town, um, and then the ability to keep our drivers on the road. So, um, I'd like to remand that to the committee, um, if that makes any sense. Um, and I think it, there's three committees that we could remand it to, but I think it's best if it starts out with, um, environment. Um, and since I'm the chair of that, I would yield to the co-chair to see, okay, it looks like we have, and then, um, okay? So it looks like we have support to remand that and have staff bring something to the committee so we can research it. And thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nutting. Moving on to Councilmember Harris, your new business.
Thank you. Actually, um, I am pleased to hear, uh, Councilmember Nutting, uh, put forward the idea that I was going to mention. I sent that, uh, note to the council a couple of weeks ago, and, um, I would just ask that, um, in particular for businesses that have been hit multiple times like ABC, um, there also be some thought given to, um, some kind of, you know, funding for, um, basically upgrading their security. Um, you know, not just covering their deductible, but, um, it, these are resources that have to persist in the city, and, um, something has to be done to, uh, make them more just robust, resilient. I don't know what the right word is, but that's, you know, as long as it's covered, I'm just throwing it out.
Just to clarify, you're, you're asking for us to find a way to fund their security?
No, no, I'm, I'm, it's this, you know, Councilmember Nutting did, you know, did, did that, uh, uh, you know, what, what I wanted. I'm just suggesting that, um, it wouldn't be the worst thing in the world to also add, um, some kind of funding for, um, to help people upgrade their, uh, basically their SEPTAD, um, uh, because they, you know, they, they, they have to be given a little bit of help, given how easy it is to do this kind of major damage.
Well, with this, with the, the proposal Councilmember Nutting had, you know, I, I'm not sure what the dollars can be used for, but maybe they can, maybe that could be part of it, but...
I, I did say other projects, Mayor.
Other projects, okay. Well, I think, I think, uh, what you're suggesting is kind of in line with what he has right now. So, and we've already agreed to that. So any more new business before we move on to board and committee reports? Seeing none, I'll start with you, Councilmember Harris.
So, um, I would like to use my time to thank Representative Tina Orwell for her successful proposal this year. Um, it's buried super deep in the state budget, uh, but, um, it's worth mentioning because it's the first true aviation emission monitoring station anywhere near Sea-Tac Airport. It's hard to believe, but there has never been a permanent, uh, pollution monitor within nine miles of the airport. Never. It was planned in 1976. Um, the scientists intended to create a network of monitors, um, but, um, it, it got walked back, and it's a funny thing, 'cause you think about it, you know, ecology spends 11 million every year on sensors to cover every inch of Puget Sound. The port has 24 permanent noise monitors, but funny thing, we never seem to monitor aviation emissions. Um, it's just nuts. Um, if we treated like water that way, we would just take one water sample every couple of years and, you know, call it good. Um, but, uh, so Representative Orwell's proposal, um, is fantastic, um, because it's something that we can build on. Um, it's only one monitor, it's not a network, but it's, uh, a mechanism where we can add on to it every year and build it out if we want. So considering it took 40 years just to get the first one, uh, this is, uh, this is a big deal. Um, she created a recipe where we can take it the rest of the way and get to legitimate regulation. Um, I understand there's the big interest recently in this lawsuit deal, and there's a lot of appeal in, you know, suing to obtain justice, you know, and all that. But, um, scientists would be the first to tell you that the actual science on aviation emissions is a long way off. Um, and, uh, you have to do this three yards and, uh, cloud of dust, um, sampling in order to get to regulations, okay? You can sue all you want, but at some point you have to do the basic science, and she provided the vehicle to get us there. If we are willing to have the courage to do that by funding additional sensors every year, um, God bless her. And I'll just close by saying, um, you know, people tend to sort of blow off chronic diseases, you know? We all know that, you know, you're overweight and it takes years off your life, and, you know, nobody changes. And you also know that, you know, um, we know that long-term exposure to aviation emissions or any kind of particulates, um, is detrimental to kids. It lowers their IQ like 10 points, okay? It's like, no joke, go look it up. Um, and you'd think that we would care more about the IQ of our children, you know, but because it's far away, um, apparently not. The airport, I would disagree with my colleagues, is like that chronic disease, you know? It's something that you pay for 20 years down the road, or your children do, because it doesn't do something to you right in the moment, so no one takes it seriously. But, um, if we really care, as we say we do about the future, um, she got us the first one for one year, and it's up to us to take it the rest of the way forward. I mean, and if we care about our kids, that's what we'll do. So, thank you, Tina Orwell. That's it.
Councilmember Pennington.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you to the, to the mayor and to the deputy mayor for going back and representing, um, our city and back in DC. I attended a public safety committee meeting this evening. I'll, uh, defer to the chair, Deputy Mayor Buxton, for that report. Um, and also, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I know I do that every week, and, and it's, it's really good to have you here. It's good for you to be here and listen. It's good to hear you firsthand. Those are the voices that, that truly get heard, at least for me. So I, I appreciate you being here and taking the time out of your evening to do that. Um, today is International Firefighters Day, so I would like to, um, thank the folks that are, that are working and, uh, still on the job, and, and whether they're a career firefighter or a volunteer firefighter makes no difference. It's, it's, the, the work is the same. And, um, I also, as we remember the folks that are riding around today in the big red truck and, and in the aid cars and the medic units, um, I would ask that you also remember those that, um, are suffering from the cancers and the PTSD and all of the things that come along with that job, and whether you're still working, whether you're still on the job or off the job, it's there. And so remember those folks, and remember their families that have made the sacrifices so they could come to your house on your worst day and help you. So with that, um, I, I will speak for myself. I appreciate... I appreciate the support from the community that you have shown myself and my department and everybody that works there over the last forty-seven years that I've been engaged with the fire department. So thank you for that. Thank you for your unwavering support for your firefighters and paramedics. That's it.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
I'd like to echo what Councilmember Pennington just said about International Firefighters Day. As the father of a firefighter, I can tell you, it's a, it's interesting when they get that call and they're going to a fire. And right now, my son's very enthusiastic about that. But, you know, you just hope that it turns out well. And the people who are willing to do that, who are willing to, as you just said, you know, come to your house on your worst day and help you out, they need to be saluted, rewarded, admired. And, you know, I think that that is, that's very important, that we need to keep that in mind. I would also like to thank both the mayor and deputy mayor for representing the city back in Washington, DC. I've had a chance to talk to them a little bit about their trip, and I think they've, they've done a fine job in pushing these matters forward and getting people's attention and just, you know, helping to kind of cut through the noise that's out there and get people focused on the particular issues that are concerning that. There, as Councilmember Harris mentioned, there is a lawsuit out there. It's a class action lawsuit. It's by a firm called Hoggins Berman. It's, they are an impact litigation firm. I'm very familiar with them. I've referred them cases before. They know exactly what they're doing. It is, a class action means that there is a group of people who are treated the same. And essentially, there's a circle about, for about five miles around the airport, and those are the people in the class. And if the class gets certified, which is going to be the first big battle in this, then the, then the litigation will proceed forward. But it's a lot easier than all three hundred thousand of those people in that area trying to individually sue the port and the airlines for what's going on. It is a pollution-focused lawsuit. It's not dealing with noise, it's not dealing with some of the other issues, but it is simply focused on pollution because that's what's dropping on your property right now. And therefore, everybody can understand that. It's a fairly simple concept in terms of legal liability because it's a trespass. Think about it that way. You didn't give anybody permission to drop a bunch of pollution on your airport. And I think it's important to keep that in mind. This does have the potential to be a game changer. While there still is a lot of science left to go, there's enough science now to prove up this lawsuit, should it advance and get on, get on that. I attended the Public Safety and Emergency Management Meeting this afternoon. I attended the Rules Committee, Ad hoc Rules Committee Meeting this afternoon as well. I'll let the chair, who is the deputy mayor, address both of those. I also attended the Quiet Skies Pugid Sound Group. They had, they call it a meetup at the quarter deck, and spent an hour talking about all kinds of issues involving the airport. One thing that has become absolutely clear is that there is a, people I think are familiar with a King County Health Department report that was produced. It's a, it's a good report, it's a pretty damning report, frankly, for the airport. And the port of, yeah, the port of Seattle hired a consultant to write a response to that. It's called the Bramble Report. I have made a public records request, sorry? Okay. I've made a public request, records request for an unredacted copy. I encourage everybody to do that and see what it is that they're actually responding to that. I did have one last thing about tomorrow, or about next week. I will not be available, I will be recovering from surgery. If I am up for it, I'm going to try to participate by phone, assuming that that's acceptable to the members of the committee, and that motion can be made at the time. But I appreciate everybody coming out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinmetz. Moving on to Councilmember Oxger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And continuing on with the comments by Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Steinmetz with regard to the airport pollution situation. One thing that is happening next Wednesday night at six PM, or six, excuse me, six-thirty PM, that's Wednesday, May tenth, at the United, Des Moines United Methodist Church, Quiet Skies is going to host a special presentation to the community by Chris Johnson, PhD. She's the person who was one of the authors of the Public Health Seattle and King County Ultrafine Particulate Matters Study. And this is an opportunity to, we talk in general about what the concerns are. She's going to give us a presentation on exactly what the problems are. And I would urge everybody to attend. Again, that's at six-thirty PM on Wednesday, May tenth, at Des Moines United Methodist Church. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Oxger. Moving on to Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. I just got one short comment. We're two weeks away from the Mount Rainier first-ever Booster Club Ram Jam auction. And just want you guys to come out and support. It's going to be at The Cove Thursday, May eighteenth, from, at six PM. And tickets are on sale now at www.mrhssboosterclub.com. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. So this afternoon, I, we convened the last formal Ad hoc Council Rules Committee, and what our task was to rewrite a kind of a governing document for the council. And it's, it's a protocol manual that talks about how we do business here at the dais and then ask council members and how we represent ourselves in the community, interact with each other, and interact with staff. So I'm really excited that we're, we're done with our draft. That'll be coming forward to council here soon. We've had a great consultant back our work up for us, and looking forward to that. Also, this afternoon, a Public Safety Emergency Management Meeting was held here in this room. And we were briefed on the success of animal control, or the activities of animal control this year. Since June, a hundred and seventy-six animals have been serviced. There had ten nine-one-one calls, microchipped thirty-six animals in April. And there are going to be more microchipping for free, and more microchipping events coming up, like at the farmer's market this summer. So look forward to that. We did, we were presented with a camping ordinance that, that our city attorney is going to come back with. We commissioned him to come back with something for us. It's a, it's a tool that's going to help us in our community and help people in our community. The basic idea is there's not going to be camping allowed in public areas, city-owned property. But just as a safety, people will not be asked to move if there's nowhere for them to go. So people, we will have to be able to provide a place or send somebody to a place in order to disallow the camping on public property. We'll hear more about that in the coming weeks. We got an update on cameras. We've got these flock cameras in the last couple of weeks. Eight cameras have been installed. They've gotten five hundred thousand reads, and a hundred and twenty-eight of those were vehicles that were stolen or involved in criminal activity. Pretty amazing. And the rest of the cameras, I think eight more, will be installed by June first. And then also, we've got a great camera program that's being installed down in Redondo, and that's scheduled to go active first week of June as well. Also, we received a briefing about our emergency operations center staff training. I just want to say, Shannon Kirchberg, a great, amazing leader in our city. And there are other cities and entities that, that are coming to us for this kind of training. You know, Burian, the college here in Des Moines, somebody from JBLM. People all over the region have come to receive the training. So touche, Shannon, and she's doing a great job. I attended a meeting this last week downtown. It was the Global Leadership Coalition. It's a bipartisan organization, it's a national organization. Their byline is kind of keeping us safe and strengthening, strengthening the United States economy. And people from former presidents and secretaries of state, they're all a member of this coalition. But Adam Smith came and was one of the key speakers. And so I mostly went as I represented, wanted to go hear him, and I was impressed with what he said. He talked about a summary. "It's not about being right, but it's about caring for other humans and coming together in humility." That's what's going to make the US strong and make us appreciated worldwide. So appreciated hearing from him. And last but not least, the farmer's market is having, coming, starting up in a couple of weeks, and they're going to have a pop-up on May thirteenth, a little Mother's Day farmer's market down at the Marina. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Buxton. I also enjoyed the Adam Smith deal. It was good to see you there. I think one of the things that many of you that are still here, remaining, you can see that, I think we're demonstrating we care about our community, and we're doing our best efforts to help all those and all your variations of needs. It's nice to see, and I think when you sum it up and you see it that way, you see that your, your city government is working for you. Vic, I really appreciate what you did as a former fire, volunteer firefighter, not the, not the, not the full boogie like you, and a former fire commissioner. I also have an amazing respect for the firefighting. If anybody's ever gone to a structure and tried to put it out or rescue somebody or some of those kind of things, it is quite an event. It changes you, particularly in some of the things that they see that nobody wants to know, and nobody wants to have that bad day, as you said before. I'll make it short. I did a ton of stuff, including DC trip, et cetera. And the other thing about particularly today is I'm a Star Wars geek, so I'm going to wish you all May the Fourth be with you. Our next meeting will be May eleventh for a regular city council meeting. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll do that, but one comment also, Assistant Chief Cooley.
Oh, there we go. So, so he went to the dark side, is that what he did? Okay, just to tie into the Fourth of July, yeah, May the Fourth, all right. Do I have a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Be unanimous, thank you. Meeting is adjourned.